Let's call to order this Newton Falls City Council regular February 3 meeting. So if you could turn off your phone or turn it to vibrate and stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me for a moment of silent prayer.
Can I throw a holler at you there?
Alberini.
Here.
Savette, Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Here.
I make a motion to excuse Ms. Savette.
Second.
Um, need a roll call now or do we, or do we discussion on it?
Well, discussion.
Discussion, roll call.
Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes. I make a motion that would excuse Ms. Musson, she's killed as well.
John, you do that.
Second out.
It's not necessary.
Not necessary.
You don't need a motion for that.
No.
Okay, I see that we have a special presentation by, what is it, the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball League. Come forward and introduce yourselves.
May I speak for a second, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I have to tell you, Mr. Rusko just got back from the Super Bowl. He was in Miami, Florida this morning and he's back here in good old Newton Falls tonight.
Super Monday.
It's like a Back to the Future, isn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, thank you.
Um, John Rusko, 21 Eagle Point, presented the Newton Falls Youth Baseball Softball and Denny Vallow here is the vice president. We wanted to bring down a plaque today is to show you guys how much we appreciate what you guys have done. Denny's gonna go ahead and read that to you and then we'd like to get a picture of that with you guys with it, so.
The Newton Falls Baseball and Softball League would like to thank you for your continued support and dedication in the success of our program and the community. We are really close to finishing our project. It was a big help from the city and everybody involved in this and of course our kids and the community to the future are gonna be able to enjoy it down the road and we would just like to say thank you and continue your support and we're gonna keep her going and keep her going in the right direction. Now we gotta protect them from everybody else and vandalism and all that stuff, so we'll be keeping an extra eye on it because we've dug every single hole to put cement in them. So we're gonna put extra effort to make sure that nobody hurts them and it's like we're almost a community watch now down there, so we wanna make sure that the future holds and it keeps on going in the right direction and I think we are. And we just wanna say thank you guys and again for your support.
Thank you.
Okay? If I could add a couple things to that, you know, I just wanted to bring up, we got a couple fundraising programs coming up here next couple of months. One is gonna be a swing on over, it's out at the Holiday Winery, they're gonna donate 10% of sales, that's February 22nd. It's from 6:30 to 10:30 PM and they're gonna donate 10% of food in all their sales that night, there's a ban plan, so if you can come out and support the Newton Falls Youth Baseball. Another one is our second annual breakfast for the ballpark at the AMVets. Last year I think we had 492 people at that breakfast. I know Shirley down there, it was huge. This year we wanna break 500. So hopefully, hopefully we can break that.
What's the date on that?
This one is March 29th and that's 8:00 AM to noon. And then also is our, we got our last sign up this coming Saturday at the elementary school, but you can also on, register online still, so that's till March 1st.
Breakfast cost?
Um, breakfast is $7 a plate and kids under 5 are free and it's all you can eat.
You're gonna have something this Saturday?
So again, I just wanna thank you guys for all the support you guys give us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I gotta say, you know, the league's been going on for a long time and there's been a lot of us all involved in that over the years, but you guys have taken it up to the next level, which is really good for the park. You know, you've done a lot of good things over there and it just takes people with a vision and people who wanna get out there and roll their sleeves up and do it and you guys are doing a great job and you can see what you're doing, that's the important thing.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
Picture.
Picture.
I'll wait. I'll wait. Okay. Okay. This tall guy there.
Mr. Mayor.
three minutes.
Gotcha.
A three-minute timer is used, when the timer sounds you will be asked to conclude your
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
statement, the comment sections on the agenda are not a debate or question and answer session, Mr. Allen, please go.
Thank you very much for all of you.
the first public comment section is for agenda items only. State your name and your address.
Bud Federoff, 321 Ridge Road, Newton Falls. In public comment section I'd like to speak towards item 13, which is listed as motion to recess into executive session. And what I would like to comment on is, when was the change for requirements authorized for executive session? I see a lot of things on here that's not listed in the charter and has never been listed anywhere before, but suddenly I'm seeing stuff like hospital trade secrets, national security. Where'd this come from? Who approved it? This is your meeting, I watched your meeting, I didn't see that done. And that's my question on item 13. The other one is on, for the finance director, under reports number 6, when will the open checkbook be available online? We haven't, we've been hearing about it, has not been posted, we've heard for the last year how they're working with the state and getting everything together and it's still not available. Quite frankly, with expenditures, a lot of money, that very apparent being, you know, that people can go down the street and see. Eric said, where the heck's this money coming from? The open checkbook, we show that. Thank you.
Martin Superintendent for the city.
You want me to suspend the rules? Because either you were coming up under the public, under the special.
Under what?
I thought Bill George was gonna come up under the special presentations, he has some stuff he wants to bring up, did we suspend the rules?
I make a motion.
You have your time to speak.
That's fine.
Okay.
Second, roll call.
Waddell.
Yes.
Braymire.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Okay, I'm here to speak to you guys about our meter reading for the city. We've had a lot of issues, it seems like, in the last four or five months. It seems like that us department heads are having to use our gentlemen to go out and read meters now, because we can't seem to keep meter readers. We've been struggling, because we're, you know, we're losing guys too now, so now we're, that's, plus we're getting done. We've talked recently and the only thing that we could, seem like we could come up with is maybe to have you guys look at maybe letting us hire some part-time people to, where each department, we would be able to hire one part-time per department, so we're talking water, water distribution and electric. We wanted wastewater to go along with us too, but it seems, right now they're, they don't have the money to be able to do that. He seems against what we're trying to do, just because of the money issues and stuff. We think that would help us, was, because if we would use our, the part-time help for the first week of the month, that way we could get our meters read and hopefully accurately and then the rest of the month we would be able to use them gentlemen as just straight labor people. So I think that will help us, hopefully we can get people to apply for that. I don't know where else to go with it, we're struggling, I mean, we just can't keep people.
Bill, a question for you, as far as the part-time folks go, what is the hourly rate that we pay them?
Right now, we don't have, actually have a rate set for, oh, for the meter readers meet.
Yeah.
They're getting $12 an hour and we're paying them for 40 hours for the first week. So you got three meter readers that are out making $12 an hour, which we, I figured out to $480, that's what we're paying them.
Yeah.
And you figure that times 12 months, that equaled out to $17,280.
So when you say 40 hours, they're actually getting a full-time week then?
Well, they're getting 40 hours for the month, that's it.
For the month, so it's every day.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, alright. What was that? So I guess the question for me would be, since you're the department head, do you suggest upping up the hourly rate as an incentive to attract?
Yes.
Well, that's in the legislation.
Yeah. We had talked about that, about going, I think we had discussed that, 1475 an hour to start them out and then that hopefully will, you know, get people interested and then hopefully, you know, down the road, maybe that'll lead to a full-time job. So I think that, that's a plus for all of us.
But aren't you going to meters, software meters eventually?
Well, we've not agreed on it.
No, I know.
I mean, if that, if that's the case, that might, that would have to change, obviously.
Our meters are all RFID readers, right?
No.
They're not, they're not chip.
Electric, no.
They're, they're talking about.
Yeah, we, we've been in talks with Gardner about doing the AMI, but that's not a done deal yet. Because we're still discussing all that.
You know, I don't know what the other utilities or the other municipalities are paying for their meter readers, I was gonna ask and I forgot, but I know that the investors are starting the meter readers at 23 an hour and they go up from there. The other thing that we don't do, that I think that we should seriously consider, is we don't provide the meter reader with a vehicle, they drive their own vehicle. Now, there isn't a lot of mileage in the city when you're doing this for a 40-hour week once a month, but we don't pay mileage and I, I think we should, even if it's, that's small amount, whether it's 10 bucks or 20 bucks, whatever it comes to, there's no reason we shouldn't be paying the meter readers mileage to use their own vehicle. And it's not in the legislation and we don't do that.
Right, but can I add to that?
Sure.
I, I don't think mileage is gonna do it.
No, mileage isn't gonna do it, but I, we still should be paying the mileage to use their own vehicle.
I, I had my eyes opened up this weekend, I read meters this weekend and it was an eye-opener for me. I didn't realize how much in and out of a vehicle and stuff there is to it and it's, it's an eye-opener.
I started with.
And now I understand why we're struggling with these people, because we're asking them to come in and use their personal vehicles and gas mileage, they don't get much mileage on it at all.
Right, right.
But it's the starting and stopping and everything, it's, it's crazy. I wouldn't wanna use my vehicle.
I started out doing it for six months, I know exactly what you're talking about.
So I, I mean, we would have to look at doing some of that and if they're part-time, we would be able to let them use our own city vehicles and because they would be covered with all our insurance. I just think that's something we need to look at.
Mr. George, let me see if I understand this right. For one week during the month, you would use them just for reading the meters?
Just strictly for reading meters only.
And then, they would be laborers?
Yes, we could use them for laborers, rest of them.
But all departments or just the labor gang?
Well, it'd be.
How would they be, how would this be?
We've looked at each department hiring the part-time person, so the electric would have a part-time person, water distribution would have a part-time person and then the water, water plant would have a part-time person. And then hopefully, once wastewater gets, you know, on their feet, then they would go along with it too and then that would give us that extra person. But yes, that way we could use them labor persons, you know, and then hopefully with, you know, we could move them up eventually.
Well, Bill, from what I can see or what I read and I hope I didn't read it wrong, we're only gonna hire three, right?
That is correct.
On the.
Because that is what we're using now is three.
I kinda wanted two just to be laborers because of the retirements, the attrition we've had in the, Mr. Schaefer's department is really, you know, trying to.
And that's not even addressing his issues, because we, I stayed with the utilities. I did speak with Harry today and he would, he was willing to go along with it if, if, if he could fund it. Now, I don't know, because we didn't talk to Anna about the street, so that's all on them. But I know the utilities would be alright.
What do you think about this, Mr. Lynch, about, is it enough? Do you think it's adequate? Have you researched it, sir?
Yes, the purpose of this legislation is just to address the reader being part of it. It's not addressing the streets and the parks maintenance department and Mr. George actually came to me about 10 days ago with this proposal and I said we would put it legislative form and in fact, if you don't mind, Mr. George, my asking you, I noticed that this is just on for first reading, here we are on February 3rd. Do you need this passed as an emergency or can it wait till the 7th? In other words, would you be able to get people on board if it wasn't passed as an emergency tonight or what's your view?
My view is, I would like to see it as an emergency.
Okay.
Because we're struggling, I mean, we really are.
Mayor, may I have another address?
Go ahead, Mr. Bariak.
Are any of these people that you, I'm not saying you, Bill, I know it's not personally for you, but the village wants to hire, are we gonna ask them to get CDLs so they can help out on the snow plowing and stuff?
I think that would be down the road. I don't think they would have to, I don't think we would require that, because we, we need meter readers, we don't really need, you know, somebody to drive CDLs and stuff. We have plenty of people that work for the city now that I think could handle that. I think that's something we could look at, I mean, it would be a plus.
I was looking at a cost-saving measure instead of paying the, you know.
Yeah, but I think down the road too.
As long as getting over there 30 hours, right? 30 hours.
Right, yeah, I think 30 hours is the key.
Are you gonna have trouble giving 30 hours during the winter?
I don't think so. If we keep having winters like this, no.
Just, just to clarify, you just said that this is, this legislation is for the meter readers only.
Right.
The conversation between Councilman Bariak and Mr. George was about keeping these on as part-time employees and keeping them at the city and the ordinance doesn't address, it just says personnel classifications, part-time temporary and seasonal positions to be amended as, it just talks about the meter readers and the part-timers. So it doesn't talk about our seasonal, I mean, there isn't a rate for the seasonal that's adjusted.
No, no, the rate is whatever, the other, well, the part-time work and that would continue during the other three weeks on a month when that individual's a meter reader is doing some other small labor jobs over in electric water and water distribution.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't, that's a good point.
And I think this, this all plays into, over the summer we had the issues with the high bills and everything, because the meters were getting read so late in the months and everything and that, that hurt on that end too and this would stop all that. So we'd be able, because the utility office is struggling with the billing, because they're getting everything so late and they can't do the bills until they have all the meter reading done.
So your immediate need right now is for three part-time meter readers in.
Yes.
What comes out? Alright.
Do we need to amend this to add any mileage in this right now?
Well, mileage is in here, so.
I know, do we need to amend it to do that?
Well, if, if you wanted to have mileage, you'd have to amend it, yes.
I, I think if we hire part-time, we would let them be able, let them use our city vehicles though, so you wouldn't have to pay mileage for them.
Okay, because they don't do that now, so.
Right.
Alright, well, if we have a legal form, that's fine, but if we're gonna make them drive their own vehicles, I think they should be paid for that.
I, I agree, we'd have to come up with something, but that, yeah, because it's, it's crazy.
Bill, from what I understand and I'd have to be corrected maybe if I am, to let the public know, it's, it was really hard from what I was able to gather, ascertain, to keep people when you only wanted to work them one week a month.
Right.
And we were having problems.
Right, and hopefully that would change.
It would change.
Yes.
So I want the public to understand that, it's not we're trying to give the money away, we're trying to keep.
Bring people in.
Bring good people in and at a part-time, part-time 30 hours.
Right.
At a little bit more than what we're paying now and then we can have the extra, we need to.
Right.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Nice tone.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to revest the rules.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Braymire.
Yes.
Alberini.
Yes.
Bariak.
Yes.
Waddell.
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody else for public comments? Nope. Alright, then, uh, reports, starting with the mayor's report, I don't have too much to report other than had some input from a couple resident meetings that I had and once again, everything positive, nothing negative to speak of. And the only other thing I have is that I got to spend some time with Mr. Lynch commentating the basketball game the other night, it's the second one we've done. We weren't quite as awful as I thought we were gonna be, but.
That's high praise.
To take that high road, I wanted to just thank the guys from the Newton Falls TV for, you know, guys and ladies for, you know, coming out, they, they come out really early to set everything up and really do a nice job. It's impressive how much you guys know about, you know, what you, what you do.
It's up on the screen right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Now, they don't have the pressure on now, so.
He speaks out, I just, I just describe what's going on, but I guess while we got it on the TV monitor, let everybody in TV land know that Friday's game is home. I sent over the, the last game that it was away, so don't listen to me, it's home, so invite you.
That's tomorrow night, brother.
Yeah, tomorrow night against Garrettsville. Garrettsville's got a good ball team, so it'd be a good game. And that's all I have. Any discussion? No. Council members?
What are you gonna start with?
I had no, no.
Mr. Bariak.
Committee, sir.
Okay.
To report.
Ms. Braymire?
The only report I have is planning and zoning tomorrow at 6 o'clock, right here.
Okay.
I have a, a number of things here for you. I met this morning with Congressman Bill Johnson at a Lateshun Legislatures in Kenfield Library and he talked about a number of things, but the two most important things he talked about was, this year for the first time, the census is extremely important, you can file online the census, your, your family and that, you can do it online, but the state of Ohio is kind of on the bubble of losing one of their congressmen if the census drops too low. So it's, it's important that everybody get counted, it's important for us even if we get counted. So the people are coming out on that, but you can do that information online this year. He also talked a lot, there was a lot of discussion about the high-speed internet and 5G, which I'll get to in a minute in another part of this, but there was a tremendous amount of discussion that's going on and the regional chamber and the, and Eastgate are really involved in this, so when we do these things, when you're working with those committees, we need to keep them involved and I talked to Sarah Boyer today about that and so. We, you and I met in Akron last week for an economic development meeting, which I thought went pretty good and then we had some interest in, in the community, Terry and I showed the Pomida Building and then all of us kinda showed through other buildings in town to some people, I thought that was good for us, I mean, we're showing it, so that's what we gotta do. We also had a meeting with Connor Brentlinger, he was the director of business development and external affairs for Structure Point, they're engineering firms and they have a connection with the USDA and the USDA has money for infrastructure and for the internet, we'll get to that in a minute too. I did go and complete my sunshine law training, which we're supposed to do, so I completed that. The, the senate is planning to, actually Senator Tim Scott, a Republican from South Carolina, is talking with some other senators and they're gonna consider a bill that would allow the states and the local governments to amend the census tracks that they chose for the opportunity zones. As you know, we are not involved in the opportunity zones and if anybody should be in it, we should be in it when there should be any, and we're not. And the word was, there was, there was not going to be any changes in it whatsoever, but they're starting to get a lot of comments from smaller communities that they were left out of the opportunity zones and people want in it. So there is some discussion on reopening some of the things for the opportunity zones and we'll keep on that, if it happens, we need to get on that. The council of development finance agencies announced that they're gonna launch a new partnership to give us some extra technical tools for our local community and for economic development and basically what they're doing is it's a way to bring more investors and national investors in for your local economic development projects, so they're, they're changing some of the laws for investors, which is kind of interesting. Let me get to, there's a new program out there funded through the USDA and it's called the reconnect program and I'll just give you this whole flyer, you'll have this whole thing when I'm done. Structure Point has a connection with the USDA and as I told this council members last year, I met with Dave Davis of the USDA about this last year, about the funding and the money and that and there's a new $300 million sitting out there for infrastructure and for high-speed internet. Now, the interesting point is that the USDA through the federal level just put $20.4 million out there for internet access. So I printed that off for you, I have it here, I'll give this to you, you can read through it and if you need more information, I can get to you on that. The.
Thank you.
Community development foundations are also working with the reconnect loan programs to try to fund high-speed internet because they realize that that is imperative for business and so the, they're also working on that. The fund that the federal government just did is called the World Digital Opportunity Fund, that is where the $20.4 billion is and you can give this to them also, this is the organization that has the money and it is separate from the USDA money, it's additional, that's additional to the $300 million. So there's, there's money out there for these projects if we can get in and again, the most association and Louisville and those people were all interested in that and so was in, again, Eastgate and the chamber, so we need to keep them involved when you start working on this project. Also, I'm going to be doing a program for the public power certification program and it's basically, it's a curriculum designed to help participants effectively govern their systems now and into the future and when you complete this, you'll receive a certification from AMP and then they recognize you in the publications and at the AMP conference this year and it really just gives you more of an, uh, information on our systems and what we can do and I think that fits right in with what I have for that. I also did some research and we had a meeting on, we sit in a tax-free investment zone and there's a, a lot of things going on out there now, financial incentives for foreign business, to bring foreign business in and all the incentives that are out there and the zone that we sit in qualifies for these incentives, if we should have the opportunity to talk with people that are coming in from somewhere else overseas to do things, we sit in that zone right here, so we have that and I'll just pass it over to everyone set, I have copies of it, so. I'll save this other one in case we get to it later. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Alberini?
Anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, since.
Fund. There's where the $20.4 billion is, and you can give this to them also. This is the organization that has the money, and it is separate from the USDA money. It's additional, that's additional to the $300 million. So there's money out there for these projects, if we can get in it. And again, the most association and Louisville and those people were all interested in that, and so was, again, Eastgate and the chamber. So we need to keep them involved when you start working on this project. Also, I'm going to be doing a program for the Public Power Certification Program, and it's basically, it's a curriculum designed to help participants effectively govern their systems now and into the future, and when you complete this, you'll receive a certification from AMP, and then they recognize you in the publications at the AMP conference this year. And it really just gives you more of an information on our systems and what we can do, and I think that fits right in with what I have for that. I also did some research, and we had a meeting on, we sit in a tax-free investment zone, and there's a lot of things going on out there now, financial incentives for foreign business, to bring foreign business in, and all the incentives that are out there, and the zone that we sit in qualifies for these incentives, if we should have the opportunity to talk with people that are coming in from somewhere else overseas to do things. We sit in that zone right here, so we have that, and I'll just pass it over to everyone set, I have copies of it, so. I'll save this other one in case we get to it later. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Alberini?
Anything, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, since Mrs. Musser's not here, will anybody be presenting a financial or no?
No, no, we just wish her well. She is very much under the weather, but prognosis is good.
Okay, Mr. Fritz, do you have anything for law director?
I do, I want to give, address what Mr. Fedorov had said. The regard to the executive session, the checklist at the back of that was never adopted by council. I don't know if it was Mr. Wilson or Mr. Monteville, back when we were, probably about seven years ago, wanted a tool in case they were on the floor deciding they wanted an executive session. Reason there's some things on there that are not within the charter is that my goal is to make sure we follow the sunshine laws, and the sunshine laws are modified. If you go to the most recent one that the Secretary of State has, it includes the ones that are on there that have been included in that checklist. That's just a tool for council, it's not been adopted by them, it's been placed on there for their, to make things more convenient and make sure that we're in compliance. It's not been, doesn't change the charter, doesn't change the council rules as we have them. I would like to see the council rules changed to include and updated on a regular basis, but these things changed post-9/11, is when they put in the national security clause, and then when they had the banking crisis about three years ago is when they, a few years after, that's when they put in the business development clause stuff with, for sunshine laws. But those things that are on the checklist are underneath the Ohio Revised Code, and are specified, and those are allowable reasons for us to go into executive session. I just want to answer that question while it was out there, and I have nothing further to report, but I'm available for questions.
Yes. It is on 121.04, executive sessions, and we only have six reasons. I don't see anything about confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance. Are you saying on the floor, sir, and I don't see national security matters, or what are we, are we in the, going to get a federal nuclear bomb contract here? What do we have national security? What affects national security here, sir?
Certainly.
I'm not aware, I've never been told.
You done?
Go ahead.
National security, if I'm going to explain the details of it, will be violation of national security issues. So it will be an executive session, you can ask specific questions back there, and the details will come out that we're in an executive session. If I were to say, it's because we have a nuclear bomb coming into this place, I'd be violating the rules. So the idea of keeping it confidential is to keep it confidential. If you don't wish to go into executive session because you don't believe, then vote no, and the vote to go into executive session comes up.
What I, excuse me, Mr. Fritz. I'm not trying to be argumentative.
Neither am I.
I'm just saying, why wasn't this ever changed in the charter?
Did you not?
It's not. Well, then, I have six reasons in here, and I want to read a couple of them, okay? I can see, to consider the purchase or sale of property if the public interest would be hurt by the premature disclosure of the information. I see that purchase or sale of property is on here tonight, I totally agree with that. To consider matters required by federal laws or rules or state statute to be kept confidential. What, does that have to do with any part of the agenda tonight?
On an executive session, you'll find out why we listed it out there.
Okay.
And again, I'm going to repeat, if you did not hear what I said or understood what I said, those things listed on your agenda are a tool that Mr., I don't, is that Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson requested, so that, because when we go into executive session, we have to be very specific while we're going in, and obviously, I want to make sure I was in compliance with the sunshine laws, so that was placed on there, you know, when Mr. Wilson was on council, and was designed to be a tool. So they look for there, and they actually read the section that was necessary. So as a matter of convenience, when the staff is preparing these agendas, we'll sometimes pre-mark them, saying this is what we're going to go in for. And again, the ones that you say that are not listed in the charter are the ones that are listed under state law that we're allowed to go in for.
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized on this for just a minute?
Go ahead.
The section Mr. Fedorov is talking about is 121.04 in our ordinance court, it's the section you're talking about, and it says specifically, items that can be kept confidential under state or federal law. There's state law that says economic incentive discussions and areas such as that can be eligible for executive session. So basically, it's a two-step process. Our law gives a whole list, and one of the reasons is, anything that's state and federal law also says can be confidential with purpose of executive sessions, and you can look in the Ohio Revised Code and see that, in the Ohio Revised Code itself. So I guess all that really is saying is that, that our own charter says this is an incomplete list, go to state and federal law if you want the rest of the list. That's what our ordinance says.
If I may, if you go to page one, if you go to page 123 of the sunshine manual, this executive session can only be held for the following reasons, certain personnel-
123 of the sunshine manual?
As the page of, yes, page 123, 134. It includes confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance. It also includes matters that be required to be kept confidential. It further goes on to explain, because of state, federal, or law laws, those that apply, certain security matters, but most of the security matters are building security matters. But there are matters that require to be confidential. If you read the entire law, it includes any federal laws or regulations, and then again, the confidential business information of an applicant for economic development assistance is also in there.
And what you're saying then, sir, you're not, anything that would be a violation of sunshine law, you're well aware of it, and we wouldn't be violating sunshine law?
At, yes, that is correct. He, the city manager normally asks me if this is something that's acceptable for executive session. In many cases, I answer right away, he knows, I know, we're just a verification. Sometimes we have to look a few things up, because some things are, not exactly fit perfectly into the square, but we want to make sure we're always in compliance. I don't want to have a lawsuit.
The, so, the other question I have, Mr. Fritz, we, as elected officials, have to retrain at Sunshine School. Is it just during the whole term, as long as we make it during the whole term?
I don't know off the top of my head.
One time during the term. Each term.
I defer to her.
In other words, as long as we do it during our term.
Mm-hmm.
I see Mr. Waddell did his already.
Each term.
Yeah, each term, I understand that.
He's just got like this little turn.
All right, and, okay.
Hold on.
And if we don't, if we don't do that, we're gigged by the state auditor.
State auditors do look for those certifications.
Okay, no further discussion, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, the only thing I will report today is a brief discussion of something that Councilman Waddell was talking about, and that is the fiberization of Newton Falls. I'll be attending the fiber conference very shortly. Our planning commission is underway of discussing fiberization in our community, and what I am anticipating is introducing legislation in front of this council for approval this year of the creation of an additional utility in Newton Falls, and that is a fiber utility. And it's all good news, because Spectrum is going to finally have a realistic competitor, not just that, a competitor who's providing high-speed internet much more than coaxial cable can provide, and it is the wave of the future, and the more fiberized your community is, the more opportunity you have to attract business. Almost every community is being barraged by the lack of fiber in their communities. In fact, we have one organization next week that's going to announce that they're annexing into the city of Newton Falls, and the reason that they'll give is because they know that we are on the precipice of establishing high-speed fiber. They want to get on board, and you, as residents, will have the opportunity to finally have the kind of high-speed service that we've been denied. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
When are you expecting that?
Later, well, I anticipate legislation later in this year, so probably sometime in September.
Hey, that's pretty quick.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I could add that Congressman Johnson talked about today was, Amazon is working on the digital future, and one of the things that they're doing is putting up two or 300 satellites that someday the fiber network and the internet won't be used. It'll be, everything will be done through the satellites. Now, they're just starting to do this, and it's a long way out, but that's one of the things that Amazon's looking to do, is put up satellites, and they'll probably start in the big cities, the big three Cs here in the state would probably be Forest, but they're looking to do that, and I believe someday cable TV and the fiber or the networks and the wiring that we have now will be obsolete, just so you know that.
Well, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome for that. But it'll be a long time down the road, but-
May I speak? I would like to know, do you have any idea what this might cost us?
It's difficult to say. It's probably in the, I would say, between the $3 and $4 million range, but the way these systems normally get installed is through something called revenue bonds, where the revenue stream from the fiber customers actually pays off the bonds, and that way, the rest of the full faith and credit and the finance of the community aren't affected in any way, shape, or form. Well, there's people buy the bonds, knowing that there's going to be a revenue stream, and believe me, fiber's a moneymaker once it goes into place. Right now, in Newton Falls, if you want to have internet, just internet, you pay $70 per month, $70 per month for service that, let's face it, isn't exactly crackerjack service. And imagine that stream of revenue in a fourth utility in Newton Falls.
Good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, do we have any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes. I'd like to add to the agenda, if I could, a motion to release the 2019 open checkbook. I was told here on the floor that it was completed, and we just had to wait for the audit to be done and completed. Our audit has been done, hasn't it, Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Well, then, I don't see why we couldn't open a checkbook up so the village could see the transparency.
I think that motions have already been passed by the council.
Has it been, we already passed?
Yeah, yeah, you did.
2019?
Yeah, I think it was added for an item going forward.
Oh, I stand corrected, I didn't see 2019, I knew 2018. Okay.
Okay.
Well, we need to add that ordinance to it.
Yeah, and I need to put something to it.
Any other changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I do have one, Mr. Chairman. There's one item which is listed as number one, 2020-03, and I'm going to pull that, as the sponsor, I'm going to pull that myself. There's still some fine tuning going on with the negotiations there, so I want to have that.
That's the first one, sir?
It is.
Okay, do we need to make a motion on that? No?
And then add that second one.
This one.
Can you run?
Yeah. Okay, and then there's, there's one needs to be added, it's the 2020-06, this is one related to the congregational church, Mr. Chairman.
Do you think a motion to add that happen or not? I make a motion that we add that to the agenda.
Second.
Where do we want to add that to?
Number eight.
Number eight. 2020-06, okay. How do we want to word that?
He said so moved, and seconded, so I think you just need to call a roll.
Okay, roll call.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
In most instances, when we have a motion that's passed, when it's done, you get a vote, you should indicate that motion is passed. Let's, let the guys kind of start doing.
Okay. Okay, the motion's passed. All right, do we have any other additions, changes, subtractions? No? All right, approval of the previous minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
All right, public hearings, none. Unfinished business, none. New business?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it falls under suspense of the rules, but I was interested in a, an executive session for the purpose of discussion of sale or purchase of property.
I make a motion to go to an executive session?
For the purposes of-
Which one is this on, sir?
Sale or purchase of property. Second.
Okay, that's executive session. Who made the motion?
I did.
Alberini made it, Waddell seconded it. Roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
We drinking it? Drinking it? You don't need to come-
I make a motion to go back to session.
We already did that. We're good, we're good with that.
Second, that motion for TV purposes.
We already did, oh.
Okay, she reads these, correct.
Okay, so ordinance 2020-04, an ordinance amending ordinance 2014-09, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, 2020-04 to an emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
I have to read it again.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2014-19, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls, and declaring emergency.
So moved.
Second.
No discussions, no vote.
Roll call.
Braymire?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Braymire?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, 2020-04, an ordinance amending ordinance 2014-09, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman, can I, well, I'll defer to council, but I do want to be heard.
Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen?
You want to go first, David?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen of council, we know that this has been a matter of great discussion all around town, and this is a first reading. So, members of council, I ask you to vote yes today, and then we'll have some intervening period of time before you can get to our next council meeting, but this legislation has to go two readings, so I think if we're really going to be a deliberative body, should vote yes today, so that ample additional consideration and conversation can take place. In other words, defeated tonight, if you are opposed to the community center lease with heritage accord, would mean that you're acting without deliberation, and this is something about which there's been so much dialogue around town, it just seems to me it would be a terrible shame not to give an opportunity for the dialogue around this agreement to move forward, so I ask for your support on the first reading tonight.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Can I be recognized?
Go ahead, Mr. Baria.
The only thing that I didn't, I didn't, I don't want to-
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 2020-04 to an emergency.
Second.
Roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
I have to read it again.
Yes.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2014-19, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls, and declaring emergency.
So moved.
Second.
No discussions, no vote. Roll call?
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes. We have to have a second reading of that. By emergency, we have to have a second reading, correct?
We just did.
No, it's only amended.
We reconsidered it. We amended it to an emergency, and we voted.
I wouldn't let you to vote on that.
Oh, geez.
You got one more?
Okay.
Do we get a credit for the other one?
Yeah. All right, ordinance 2020-04, an ordinance amending ordinance 2014-09, an ordinance establishing pay rates for certain employees of the city of Newton Falls.
And declaring an emergency.
And declaring an emergency.
There we go.
Second. Roll call?
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Indicates passed by emergency.
Passed by emergency?
Okay, ordinance 2020-05, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with a heritage accord for the Newton Falls Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman, can I, well, I'll defer to council, but I do want to be heard.
Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen?
You want to go first, David?
Sure. Ladies and gentlemen of council, we know that this has been a matter of great discussion all around town, and this is a first reading. So, members of council, I ask you to vote yes today, and then we'll have some intervening period of time before you get to our next council meeting. But this legislation has to go two readings, so I think if we're really going to be a deliberative body, should vote yes today, so that ample additional consideration and conversation can take place. In other words, defeated tonight, if you are opposed to the community center lease with heritage accord, would mean that you're acting without deliberation. And this is something about which there's been so much dialogue around town. It just seems to me it would be a terrible shame not to give an opportunity for the dialogue around this agreement to move forward. So I ask for your support on the first reading tonight.
I have questions.
Uh-huh.
Can I be recognized? Go ahead, Mr. Barak. The only thing that I didn't, I didn't, I don't want to step in, and this should be a question for the law director, too. It seems that Mr. Lynch has his sole authority to oversee this whole thing. Can't council be, we add anything to this contract where council has a way that if things aren't going right or something would happen to Mr. Lynch? Do we have a right to weigh in on this? I know we're just legislative, but you know, why is everything at his sole discretion?
For purposes of the contract, to keep things efficient, we do it that way. The majority of council can always direct the city major or future city major to do something if you see something that's not going on the way you want. So even though the city major's listed in the contract, a majority of council can direct the city major to do some sort of action. So you always have that ultimate control.
Look, God forbid, but what I'm saying is, they run into a little bit of money problems where they have troubles. And all of a sudden, they start stretching utilities out, and they don't come up with this, with their insurance payments and that. Then, Mr. Lynch has all the authority to say, okay, let's let it go.
I'll explain it again. You have the ultimate authority. Majority of council can vote and direct the city manager to do whatever action the majority of council wishes at that point. If, for example, the one you used where they're behind on utilities, you could have by majority vote, say, to direct the city manager to cut off their utilities, to begin the collection process, be in a lawsuit. You could direct the city manager to any one of those choices that you, this body would think would be necessary by majority at later date.
I understand.
So you always have that ultimate control.
Mr. Chairman, could I be heard on that part, please?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you. What you described would be in breach of the contract.
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract. That would be a breach of the contract.
Part of it is.
Therefore, you, as a member of council, could actually direct the law director to initiate a breach of contract action. So, like the law director says, you hold the ultimate authority. However, I want to make sure it's clear. The spirit of our charter and the directive of our charter is that contracts are to be administered through the city manager's office. It's part of my responsibility to make sure they dot their i's and cross their t's. And so I guess what I'm saying is that the balance of power that we have between the branches of government here is appropriate for the purposes of making sure that they live up to their obligations.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Aubrey is...
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to just say a few words here real quick. I don't want to overthink this at all. But we had the pleasure, myself and Councilman Waddell, to meet with Connie and Steve here probably about a year and a half ago. And she had given us some great ideas and some proposals back then on what their group could do to bring the community center back up to par. My goal as a council person was not to spend any more tax dollars over there. So with her organization coming on board, she, she has alleviated that issue for this council person. And I had committed back then, if she got her organization in place, that I totally would support that organization. And I think our goal as council is to make sure that we help you be as successful as you can be in getting that place open, so.
Mr. Waddell?
I also want to say, actually, on item number 23 on the lease, pretty much covers everything that Mr. Barak was asking about. I think it's pretty clear there that if they feel to do their obligations, we have, we have the ability to do the things that we need to do, whether or without you. I mean, it goes to the law director, they can take care of this. But as Mr. Aubrey said, him and I did meet with Ms. Talcott to discuss this, and I asked a lot of questions. I think my stance on the community center is pretty clear. And I asked her a lot of questions, and she gave me answers. And I said that I would support this if they came up with a viable lease that we had not seen before, because nobody's ever submitted a lease to this council for any reason. The one that was going to be submitted was pulled, so this council has never seen a lease for that building. So this is the first lease that's been submitted to council. I think it covers everything. I just had the concern that I'd hate to see somebody putting an awful lot of money into that building and saying, nope, we don't want any more chairs again, and we're back to square one. And I certainly get the feeling that that's not what she intends to do. So I thought I would support it if we got a valid lease, and I feel this lease covers my concerns.
Mr. Barak?
I just want to, I want to ask a question. I want to be a stick in the mud. The city manager, he's administrative. What gives him the right to sponsor legislation? I mean, under the charter? Can you tell me that, Mr. Fritz? I just don't want anybody to come back and say this was done a...
Point a, point a, point a in Terry and inquire, please.
Second that.
I think that if you look back, the city manager has been submitting legislation for an awful long time. And I don't see in the charter where it says he can't. So I'll leave it at that before I file a, you know, another motion. But I, I believe that there is no place in the charter that says the city manager cannot submit legislation. Is that true?
My knowledge.
It says the mayor and council. Isn't that right, Mr. Fritz?
No.
What does it say, sir? Could you read that?
Yeah. If you look at this section, it includes the staff, the staff of city council. If you go to that section, under the council rules, it says about the staff. The staff consists of the city clerk, the law director, and the city manager, and they are to prepare, assist council preparation of the agenda. There's nothing in there that specifies who can and cannot sponsor. There's a section in council rules that indicates sponsorship, but it's not a requirement. Does it list who can't, who cannot do it? So by inference, anybody that prepares the agenda is able to sponsor, get it on the agenda. Once on the agenda, this body has the ability to say no, vote it down. But the sponsorship issue is not specified anywhere within the charter. And if you go to the section of the staff for city council, it is the clerk, the law director, and the city manager. By inference, can create the agenda, which means they can put things on the agenda.
Well, I am glad of one thing. For a long time there, Mr. Fritz, you know, there was stuff put out, and nobody had it sponsored. There was no names put on anything. I believe if you sponsor something, you should have your name tagged to it. And if you're not going to sponsor it, then don't have your name tagged to it. Why would I want to tag it now? We went through a couple of times before where we went through this administrative versus, as a matter of fact, over the, I was told over the civil service here about a month and a half ago, to watch myself, because I'd be getting an administrative, because I posed a question and asked, whatever happened to the civil service test that was supposed to be given out? And I was told, watch, I may be crossing lines. I still feel administrative is separate than legislative, sir. That's all I want to say. And I'm going to look that up tonight in the charter and see, I mean, you know what I mean, if we can, I want to be corrected if I need to be corrected.
Can we call for a vote? I would say this is two separate issues that John was talking about.
Do we need a, a motion made there, or, on that, or?
There has to be a second.
A second, all right. Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Terry did. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call?
Berriac?
This is for the, to keep the community center open? I mean, the contract? Yes.
This is the first reading?
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, first reading passes.
Resolution 05-02020, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a contract with Thomas Folk and Associates, Inc. for general engineering services for 2020.
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Can we recognize, Mr. Chairman? Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, Thomas Folk is, for lack of a better, a better term, our in-house engineer from the standpoint of the garden variety engineering questions that come up. And one of the most important things that they do, one of the reasons we want to keep them on retainer, is they fill out the applications for our Ohio Public Works Commission grants and loans. And they do these applications free of charge. Now, there's another piece to that, because if we do get the grant, we need an engineer, and they get that engineering service. But in the meantime, over the years, being our in-house engineering firm, they've done quite a bit of work. And if you need an engineer on short notice, which you do on occasion due to some water events, especially that happen around town, sewer events, we need to have somebody that I can pick up the phone with and say, hey, we've got this problem. Can you solve it for us now, today, and give us some information? And that's why you want to have someone on retainer. And just as a footnote to my remarks about the Public Works Commission grants, it looks like, as I mentioned before, we will, for the first time in the history of this community, get three of them this year. We've only gotten one grant each year, except for one previous year. I think we got two grants. We've already been approved for two grants this year. And now, Mr. Barak, as you know, that last street is Washington Street, and we're going to the Small Governments Committee in Columbus. And we've had tremendous cooperation from Folk's office and also from Randy Smith's office in helping us get these things. So I hope that you will, you will approve our engineering contract this year.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, hasn't Folk and Associates been with us for quite a while?
Yeah, I think they have.
How many years?
Years preceding me. I'm going to ask this, okay, I'm going to estimate seven to...
At least.
Seven to 10 years?
Yeah.
By the way, we have a number of other engineering firms that we use for different purposes as well. Sawville's doing our electric rate, and we have a separate firm that does the work as relates to the water treatment plant, also a different one with wastewater treatment plant. So there are two really rotten evils in the world that you have to contend with, engineers, and with all due respect, lawyers. So...
Who said that to you before, huh?
So, it's unfortunate, but the, operate without an engineer is foolish. And I, by the way, I can mention one other example of this. There are some communities in Ohio that never get Ohio Public Works Commission grants or loans, because they never hire an engineer to help with it. And who do you think is on the East Gate Technical Committee for the purpose of making the decisions? Engineers. It's like a little club, and we've got to make sure we're playing in their sandbox.
That's right.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Okay, passes.
Resolution 06-2020, a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a paddling enhancement grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Works, natural resources.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I'd like to hear the city manager weigh in on this one.
You know, if Councilman Savet were here, he'd tell you about the paddling opportunities for kayaking up and down the Mahoning River. And we're looking for a grant as well, which will be especially apropos for the ward where Councilman Berriac is there, where that area has opened up as to a, I'll describe it as a landing station for people that don't want to go over the many falls over there across the Director International. And I will tell you that the clearing out of that area over there by Commerce Park probably is one of the reasons we'll probably get this grant, because they see the fact that suddenly Newton Falls is a place where people want to go kayaking. And I want to open that up even more. You know, there are other places around town, too. You get over there by the Covered Bridge. There are some areas that are very adjacent to the, to the level of the water. So there's some great opportunities here, so I think we're going to get one. And Councilman Savet has asked me to make sure I convey his words of support for this legislation.
And this, do we have any idea how much the grant we're going to go for? I mean, I didn't catch that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I am looking for the form right now. See if I can find it if you can help me. I'll tell you in one second.
While you're looking there, I did speak with Mr. Corvet, Savet, whatever. He's a good boy, about opportunities from the bridge down by us here going towards West Branch. I know the river, the river kind of gets narrowed down there, but I did speak with him, I think, a few months back about opening up that area also to canoe and kayak, kayaking as well.
I don't have that information. I think it's, I think it's around $30,000, but I don't have that information.
Was that, was that going to be tied in at all, Mr. Lynch, with the walkway we were talking about?
That's, that's one of the things that we put in our application.
The walkway to get across the road to the park down there?
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'd like, Terry, you can, there's muskies down there. They watch as they pull you in, to them wall eyes.
Can, can I have a moment?
There's some big muskies down there.
Hold on one second. Give me, give me a second here, okay? He's got a good point. Bear with me, bear with me.
Amy, you're going to have to zoom in on this picture. I think he's about to pull the...
Yeah, we're about to pull a photo off tonight here.
Comes a fish story.
This isn't going to be a fish story, is it?
Well, um...
He's using a magnifying glass. I can tell.
John, no, I'm, I'm glad you're not wrong.
In case somebody didn't see...
Okay, folks.
There was a 38 and a half inch muskie caught down on the East River at Commerce Park.
Here it is. There's a muskie. Seriously, how about that? 32 inches down here by McDonald's.
That's my blank mark.
Can you see that?
You got to hold it still so she can zoom in.
Oh, you had a fight over rivers now, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a river fight.
I caught on a blue Rapala. I don't fish for carp.
That's a catfish.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry. Anyway, I caught the real deal.
River fight.
I'm sorry for that.
Did you eat it?
No, you don't eat muskies.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
I've had it up to the gills with this discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Wrong call.
Ray Meyer?
Ah, yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Berriac?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
All right, passes.
Okay.
Red. I like the way I put red on there.
I saw that.
We have Mr. McCoy here, who is with the Civil Service Commissioner. The new charter change had it that the chairperson of the committee would present their report. Mr. McCoy is here for civil service. Mr. Bodnar was going to be here for planning and zoning, but he had something go on at home that he needed to stay there for. So I'll read that one if you're, if you want to let Mr. McCoy start.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. McCoy.
We did note that the...
Cassie?
Okay.
Have a coffee.
Oh, do you have it?
We've had a couple of items this year that we took, was asked to review about the linemen, apprenticeship certification scores, reviewing the new...
Newly certified officer position in police department, and authorized a waiver of the tests for the positions of financial utility clerks, and waived tests for a full-time deputy clerk position, those are items that we worked on, always asked to work on this year.
Planning and zoning, they're, at their first meeting, they appointed Zach Savet as chairman, Rick Bodnar as vice chair. The meetings were held on the first Tuesday of each month at 5:30. Had five members, Zach Savet, Rick Stanish, Paul King, Rick Bodnar, Tim Williman. Terry Alberini and Phil Beer were the council representatives to the commission. They met or took action on the following. They met with representatives from the Preservation Foundation and discussed creating historic district. They did a final review of the zoning map and proposed changes. They had a lot combination for false car wash, held a hearing on rezoning of lots, and a variance request from, for off-street parking requirements. They submitted two pieces of legislation to council, one on combination of lots and a rezoning, and they were approved by council. They, in addition, they had additional review on the proposed zoning map changes, the historic district. They authorized the city manager, they had legislation that could combine up to five lots without having to go to the zoning board, discussed demolition of historic houses on Milton Boulevard, closing of the Family Dollar Store by the city manager due to concerns with the unsafe structure. They then appointed Bodnar as chair after the resignation of Savet, who was then appointed to city council. And they heard a presentation from Trumbull County on the GIS system that we're now getting. All the meetings are open to the public. Commission's required to publish all public hearings and to contact adjoining neighbors when a variance is requested. Members investigate and review all requests that come before them.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept?
Wait, we're not done yet.
There's more.
We got more. I don't see anybody here from Parks and Rec. So Parks and Rec members were Tim Stinson, Mike Bio, Bob Lee, with the council representative was Phil Beer. Six meetings were scheduled and held. Tim Stinson was chair, Mike Bio, vice chair, Bob Lee, secretary. Money was appropriated by the city for the baseball fields. Members Members wanted to make sure the money was being used by the Newton Falls Used Baseball League as stated. Safety inspection was requested on playground equipment. Inventory of playground equipment that needed to repair or replaced was requested. Discussed the request from the Preservation Foundation for funding from the Parks and Rec Commission, discussed park usage and possibility of donating used or unused parks to the property owners in the area, discussed with Harry Shaver, street superintendent, installation of a large drain through the center, through the park from Center Street to River, reviewed with street superintendent, city manager, areas in the park that needed addressed, mentioned grills and picnic tables at Commerce Park, discussed repurposing the tennis courts, discussed hiring a parks coordinator, motion to install pet waste eliminator stations, starting at the city park and commencing at Commerce Park, met with the city manager and Councilman Savett to discuss a park master plan. The farmers market days were the last Saturday in the months of June, July, and August. High school senior day was held in April, and all of their meetings were on the fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Anna is not here, would you like me to read hers? Annual report for the Utility Appeals Board of Review had 15 appeals and met on six occasions during 2019. Board reviewed the appeals and information provided by the utility office and other departments within the village and made rulings on each case. The board does not have a budget and therefore spent no money. Treasury Investment Board for the 2019 City Investment Portfolio performed consistent with our primary goals of preservation and capital and modest returns. Combination of U.S. government-related securities along with high-quality corporate bonds has been the strategy for a number of years and has served the city well through numerous periods of volatility in the various markets. In 2019, chart clearly shows the Village of Newton Falls had a record year with a combined average earning of 6.40% on our investments. In the previous year, the village had the effects of rising rates as bond prices tend to react negatively. With our conservative investment management strategy, we protect our investments regardless of the market conditions.
They don't have to be approved, they just have to be read.
Okay.
We want to move on to the next step.
All right. Yeah.
The motion to schedule the second meeting of February for Wednesday, February 19, 2020, at 6:00 PM.
Some of...
Second.
Was that due?
Any discussion on that?
Is everybody all right with that?
I said, any discussion on it?
Any discussion.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm in.
Okay, roll call?
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
I'm not sure, yes.
And then we have ordinance 2020-06, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with the Newton Falls First Congregational Church and declaring an emergency.
Some...
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say to the public tonight that I've been given a chance to speak, and for a long time, I've been here all my life. And for a long time, we wanted to get sort of what, I could tell the public, all our eggs in one basket. It was a time when we had finance up here, and then during, I think it was Mr. Kirkland's city manager, and I could be corrected with Kathy would help me maybe, we moved down to the annex building because we were able to buy that. But our goal has always been to put city, the municipal building, in one spot, in one One of the main reasons that I'll support it tonight is that the annex building is in very bad shape. Needs a roof, the, there's no parking, the road behind it is almost mud, the windows, the bathrooms are gone. A conservative estimate, and I do a lot of remodeling, and probably Mr. Waddell might want to weigh in on it, I'd say a conservative estimate would be at least $70,000 to put into that. And we still wouldn't have anything that what we were... So tonight, I want to tell the public that I've weighed this, and I'm going to support it just for the betterment of the city as a whole. We'll have, it's a beautiful building. It has a beautiful, where we can have the council meetings, beautiful, everything has just been done over, well, a lot of it was done over during a tornado. And it's in very good shape. Oh, we're gonna have to do a little bit to it, I'm not gonna say that. But I feel that it's a move forward, and I was assured tonight, even though that Mr. Savett wasn't here, that he was on board with it. He would, is that, am I allowed to say that, Joe?
He's a little late.
Well, I'm gonna say it, Anna just said it, throw me off council, I guess. But Mr. Savett was on board with it, and it, there's been a lot of positive. I don't know how the things leak out, but the only way you can keep a secret amongst two people is if one's dead. But there's been word all over the street today that we were buying this building, and I don't know how that got out, but I want to know if this is my only address tonight that I will support this. Thank you.
Any closing remarks?
You don't say? No, no.
I think it's, you know, we've all looked at it. I think it's a great facility. I think that, as Mr. Bariak said, that I think there is a number out there where they looked at estimates for the annex, and I think it was higher than $70,000.
That was just the roof.
I was gonna say, it was quite a bit north of that, so I think that, you know, this, we have an opportunity to get, we can't get them all over there because it just isn't feasible to take everybody over there. But I think we can get most of the administrative offices in there and still have room for rentals for public use, and I think it's gonna work out. It's ADA, it's handicap accessible already, it's everything, it's just a really, really nice facility. And it gives us a place, you know, it's nice to have the things downstairs in the ugly room, but we don't have an ugly room over there. We have a very nice room to have meetings in, so.
That's true. Oh, wait, I do have one thing.
Oh, go ahead.
Where will my office be?
We've put that on... There's one Spider-Man wallpaper there for you.
I want to thank the citizens of Ward 1 over there. A lot of them approached me personally, so I can't say it was Terry's idea or Lyle's idea to do that, it was all council's idea, but I appreciate the people in Ward 1 giving us a heads up and expressing their interest that the city purchased such a beautiful iconic building. I was amazed when I walked through there, the majestic sculptures and the balcony and the actual sanctuary, just, it was just so beautiful over there. And then there's so many rooms in that place, but I think the goal, as Mr. Bariak said, is to come into the 22nd century and put everything under one roof, make it a one-stop-shop for all of our citizens of Newton Falls, so they don't have to go to any other buildings like the annex building and discuss their taxes. I sure hope we don't have a, get into the saving the annex building, right? Just saying.
I haven't even questioned.
But I'm real thankful for the folks at the Congregational Church, a lot of them are my neighbors, great people. The asking price, I thought, was just absolutely more than fair. So I'm, I think we're blessed to get such a building like that.
Bray Meyer?
No, wait, I forgot. The police department, will the police department be coming down to the center, I mean, down to the new building, or no?
I think a lot of those logistic items will have...
Have to go over in the next meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Bariak?
I would like to tell the public, too, that when we were down at the building, there are already at least 65 parking spaces, and there can be a lot more. There's a beautiful, two acres that's already cleared, ready, shovel-ready for anything, you know, down the road. And there, at least we'll have some parking. We don't have to worry about whether, God forbid, Mr. Cato, whatever, die or sell the place, have parking, and I counted all the space, there could be more parking, made more than 65, real quick.
Okay, any other further discussion? No? Okay, roll call?
Bariak?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini? Yes.
Okay.
Ordinance 2020-06, an ordinance authorizing a city manager to enter into a contract with the Newton Falls First Congregational Church and declaring an emergency.
Some...
Second.
Roll call?
Waddell?
Yes.
Bray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay, if we have any public comments, and this is final comments, so final public comment section can be on any issue that the public wishes.
Bud Federoff, 321 Ridge Road, Newton Falls. I have two comments to make tonight. The first one, if I've been watching TV for the last month, whatever, you've seen the impeachment and stuff like that, and it boils down to separation of authority. Who's got the authority? Who's administrative? Who's legislative? That we've got the same problem right here. The charter does not say anything about the city manager introducing legislation. I don't care what Mr. Wilson did 20 years ago, there's not a whole lot of us left around to even remember him. But if council wants this, there's a provision for it to be put on the charter to change. We don't go back on, we've always done it that way. That's the reason people get more than a little upset with the Village of Newton Falls. We always did it that way. No, they're good enough. We're paying good people good money to make these changes, which brings right into the other one. Motion for recess into executive session. We hear the lengthy resuscitation about how this isn't really what it says, it's really the charter and the sunshine law and the state and federal laws. Well, damn it, if that's what it is, say that. Don't list 9, 10, 11, 12, 15 of them things there saying, this is the only thing that you can go to executive session, when our law director just sat here and told us, no, it ain't. Anything with the charter, anything in sunshine law, any of the state laws, national security, federal laws, say what it is. And then state, federal, whatever, that's why we pay Mr. Fritz to word it out, and then say what the particular thing is, rather than looking like we're limiting here, which quite frankly does nothing but start rumors, I'll be honest with you. That's all, thank you. Anybody else?
William George, Lieutenant Superintendent. I just want to thank you guys for passing that 2020-4 is an emergency. I'm sure I can speak for all the utilities, I hope, and they will, hope this will fix our issues with meter reading, so I appreciate it.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, if I can go into closing remarks.
Go ahead.
Tonight, I saw we're going to apply for a grant for MoDNR, and I didn't participate like Mr. Savett did on the master plan, but I was aware, we went through it. And I think part of the master plan is, part of it is improving our parks and enlarging them, especially the Covered Bridge. And I think we're missing a chance to develop the Covered Bridge. We have restaurants down there, Subway, the bakery, maybe, if I was gonna say, down the road, maybe we'd find some money for acquisition of the property in that little house, if that guy was even interested, and start to get some people here, clean the bank up, or, you know, whoever we could get, and start touting our Covered Bridge, too. We have a jewel that many, many communities in this state would just give their eye teeth for, and we've let it go for way, way, way too long. With that, I'd like to concede the floor to my colleague, if she'd like to say anything.
No, thank you, Tody.
Oh, God, not Tody.
Mr. Mayor, just a few things. There is to be on the next agenda, a study to how to best utilize our structures, our buildings. And obviously, the new building will be looked at very carefully. I don't believe that the, you know, I'm not sure the police department's gonna get over there, I don't know, but the idea is to use that building for as many offices as we can, and it's about 16,000 square feet. It's a really nice facility, and there's a lot of rooms and a lot of things we can do. I had the opportunity last week to meet with Mike Wilson, who is the director of Scope, and you're gonna have a meeting this week with him. And Scope is real excited about us possibly buying the building at the time, and so now that we are, Scope would love to come back to Newton Falls, go into a city building, bring meals back to the local seniors that are 50 years and older. You don't have to be 65, 70. Scope is 50 years and older, and they want to bring the meals back, they'd like to bring back some, the silver sneakers that have, that left on their own, we didn't throw them out, they left on their own. But Scope is real excited about being part of Newton Falls again and going into the new building, and we need to work on that before the 1st of March, when their budget is due. I also had the opportunity today while I was at, in Springfield, talking with MS Consultants, and we were talking about, they're involved with the parks and those kind of things, and I asked them, because there is some interest in possibly building a rec center. Niles Wellness Center, it was $4.1 million, and they have a lot of problems. It's quite a facility, it's a tremendous facility, but that's not something that we need here. We need something that'll service our community, and I certainly have gotten a lot of comments, you put it out on Facebook for people to call, but nobody called, so when I, I went out knocking door to door, and I asked every person I saw how they felt about, you know, the community center, what they needed. And overwhelmingly, this community would like a place for the community to go and a recreational facility for the kids, and you can do it all in one. Talked to a lot of kids that are in school, and they would love to have some type of an indoor facility, and MS Consultants said, you know, I asked her, I said, you know, for half a million dollars, what kind of a structure can you put up? And she said, you can put up quite a structure for that kind of money. And as Councilman Bariak said, there is a lot of property on the backside of that church, and not take away the parking lot and that, so there's a, we've kind of thrown around the idea maybe of an addition already to look at maybe somehow to put a recreational facility for our community in there and utilize it. And I think it's gonna be great, it's a little ways down the road yet for them, but Scope is very interested in coming back to our community.
I have nothing.
I just want to, my closing remarks, just to thank the individuals here at the table, of your, just your diligence and your hearts for your community, and all we accomplish when we work together like this, that a, you know, sometimes we have conflict, sometimes we have disagreements, and as I said, the week before last, there's nothing wrong with that, but I think we handle ourselves as adults and hear each other out and meet somewhere in the middle, as they say, and see a whole lot of paperwork done here by, you know, about 7:30, quarter to 8:00, and I just, again, thank you for your, you know, for having a focus on Newton Falls and not, you know, on self, that's all I have. Mr. City Manager, you have...
The only report I have is to ask Amy on the main camera that's on me right now, and swing your camera lens to the extreme left to where Steve Hardingger is for just a moment. And ladies and gentlemen, Steve Hardingger, wait for that to pop up on the screen, is celebrating...
Hardingger.
Hardingger, well, thank you, sir.
I get that a lot.
Finally. He's celebrating his birthday today, and Steve is a carryover from the days when these meetings were all done with a single camera, and the camera would sweep from one person to another. It was a, sort of a chaotic production, and now, using Steve's outstanding skills, Steve Hardingger's skills, we've got a great production, and he's been the one that's been participating and leading the crew charge for the purposes of our football seasons and our basketball games, did a great job during the girls volleyball season, and I just want a round of applause to say happy birthday to Steve Hardingger. Thank you. And that concludes my remarks this evening, Mr. Mayor.
So are we going to make a motion to go back into executive session?
Nope. Table's that other...
I'll square away then?
Yep.
But a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, we're not going to discuss that, so, roll call.
Ray Meyer?
Yes.
Alberini?
Yes.
Bariak?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
See, I'm new, and I don't know really what to say, you know what I mean?
Well, I'd like to get the new computer back. The battery went down, I forgot. You got a charge rig?